Good morning and welcome to all of you to our County Commissioners Meeting. I'd like to call it to order and let's do our roll call, gentlemen. Mr. Hammond, if you will do the, are we missing, did we get everybody? If you will do the invocation from your seat and Mr. James if you'll do the pledge. Thank you.
Let us pray. Mercy for God our Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for the blessings of life and all that you mean to us. Blessed with your mercy and your grace and forgiveness and bless us and direct us through the meeting today that all we do we might be done for the benefit of the citizens of our county. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Please face the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our next order of business is the issuance of oaths of office. Our county clerk, Kimberly Hines.
Right here in the middle. Ms. Phyllis, you want to come hold the Bible for him? Okay. If you'll place your hand on the Bible and repeat after me, raise your left hand. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
That I, Tom Coulson,
That I was Tom Coulson.
Will support the Constitution and laws of the United States
Will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office
The duties of my office.
As a Pitt County Board of Commissioner
As a Pitt County Board of Commissioner.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Commissioner McLauren. Place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
That I, Melvin McLauren
That I, Melvin McLauren
Will support the Constitution and laws
Will support the Constitution and laws
Of the United States
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office
The duties of my office.
As a Pitt County Board of Commissioner
As a Pitt County Board of Commissioner.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. If you place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
That I, Beth B. Ward
That I, Beth B. Ward
Will support the Constitution
Will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office
The duties of my office.
As a Pitt County Board of Commissioner
As a Pitt County Board of Commissioner.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, I will now turn, as my last duties chair, turn over to our county attorney, Janice Gallagher, the election of our officers for the coming year.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, Rule 5B calls for the next order of your business to be the election of officers. Any Commissioner may nominate any other Commissioner for Chairman or may nominate the current Chairman or Vice Chairman for a second term. Nominations do not require a second. It is not necessary to open or close nominations by motion. Once all Commissioners have had an opportunity to make a nomination, with the last nominee being voted on first and continuing in reverse order, we will vote. A supermajority vote will, of the entire Board, is necessary to reelect a current Chairman and a simple majority is otherwise required.
I'd like the nominee of Commissioner Jamie Garrus.
As Chairman. Are there any other nominations for the Office of Chair? Hearing none, we will vote for that office.
Mr. Hammond, if you'll vote, please.
And Mr. Owens to confirm. And Jamie Garrus is now your Chair. Congratulations. I will now accept nominations for the Office of Vice Chair.
Madam Parliamentarian, I'd nominate Marka Owens.
Are there any other nominations for the position of Vice Chair? Hearing none, we will vote for the position of Vice Chair.
Madam Chair, may I abstain on that?
You may. Well, it will not make a difference.
Oh, can't get it right.
Thank you very much.
You understand what I meant.
Yes, and we'll have the minutes reflected as you've spoken.
If you don't vote
Congratulations, Mr. Garrus is now Chair and Mr. Owens, Vice Chair. And at this point you may recess to rearrange your seats.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's recess. We don't have to vote for recess.
Why don't we just tell them?
Welcome back to our meeting. I would like to express my appreciation to my fellow Board members for the opportunity of serving as your Chairman for the coming year. And I'd also like to thank Beth for the fabulous job she did this year. We appreciate all of your work and all of your efforts. Also, I would like to take this opportunity to welcome Tom Coulson back to our Board. He served four years ago for two terms or one term?
Eight.
For two terms and he's back and we appreciate your willingness to serve. Welcome back. Look forward to working with you. We have some challenges in 2013 as we do in every year. And one of our biggest challenges, of course, will be our budgeting process. We have been hoping and praying that the economy would shift and help us in our budgeting process, but it doesn't look like that has happened too vigorously yet. So we, as a Board, need to go on and start thinking about the challenge of our budget. And I'm sure that working together, we will come up with a budget that will be satisfactory. It may not satisfy everyone, but we will try to satisfy the bulk of our citizens and meet the needs of our community. We shall now continue on with our agenda for today. And the next item on our agenda is the approval of our
Motion to approve.
Second. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Second.
It is my understanding that we can get more complete information with item number six under consent. We postpone that until our next meeting.
Yes, Commissioner Johnson, the monthly financial report, we're recommending that that be deferred until the next meeting where we can combine that with the annual financial report presentation that will be made at the time.
Okay. Motion to approve with the necessary Any further discussion? Let's vote. Do we have anyone that signed up for our public address?
No, sir.
Okay. We will move on then to our items for report. The first item is our manager's report. Mr. Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple items to report on. Your next meeting will be December 17th at 6:00 PM here in your boardroom. Item B wanted to do a special recognition for Rita Roy, who is the county's Recreation Director, actually Communities and Schools Recreation Director. But she has been recently recognized by the North Carolina Recreation and Parks Association and she received an award called the Notorious Service Award. And just thought the Board, the public should be aware of that. This has been in the paper, but didn't want to bring it to your attention to recognize her. Item C on the agenda, the Legislative Goals Conference is being put on by the NCACC, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, is going to be January 24th and 25th and that will be in Raleigh at RTP. And will, the next meeting, you'll be voting on a voting delegate for that conference.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any questions to our manager? Moving ahead then on our ABC Quarterly Report, we have Ms. Campbell that will come forward and present that to us.
Good morning, members of the Board and guests. I'm here this morning to give a short presentation on our quarterly report for the first quarter of 2013. Our gross sales for the first quarter were $3,745,971, a $67,091 increase over fiscal year 2012. As you can see on the sales comparison chart, that our first quarter sales for 2013 were slightly up over 2012. $3,745,970 for 2013 and up from $3,698,879. On our next slide here, we have our year-to-date distribution and retention. Our change in net assets before the profit distribution was $352,628.73. Actual distributions to the county required by the statute for the quarter ended 9/30/2012 was $93,059.26. And an additional distribution to the county from working capital, $6,947.4 for a total of $100,000 for the first quarter. Now, I know normally we do 275 a quarter, but we made an agreement that the first quarter we would do 100,000 and then at the end of the second quarter would make up the difference between that for that distribution. And so the total to the county was 100,000 and we retained $252,628.73. So the total distribution, beverage price support to Pitt County, which is paid on a monthly basis, was $12,991.09. The profit distribution, $100,000, comes to $112,991.09. And does anybody have any questions for us this morning?
I have some.
Yes, sir.
In the past, the Board members have gone to out-of-state meetings and so forth. I would like to report as to where, who goes to those meetings, how much is spent, if you don't mind.
Okay, well, I can already tell you, nobody does. I'm the only one that attends those since I am on the North Carolina Association of ABC.
That is true. That's good, because that's what I want to be able to tell the people when they ask me. So no money is being spent pertaining to that from the ABC Board.
Correct.
All right, that's what I want to know, Mr. [inaudible].
Thank you. Any further questions?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I wanted to say that Teresa has been doing an outstanding job in terms of being supportive of the needs of the county. And I think our Board has assembled itself, engaged itself to the proper attitude in terms of what we have to do to supplement this county. So I wanted to publicly commend Teresa and her staff for an outstanding job.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner McLauren.
And I want to say thank you, too.
Thank you.
For all that you're doing. This is what we need.
That's right. We're going to keep on working hard.
Any additional questions or comments? Thank you very much. We now have to have a motion to accept the report.
I saw a move, Mr. [inaudible].
Okay. Any further discussion? Let's vote. Okay, thank you. Next item on our agenda is another item for report and that will be presented by our Development Commission Manager, Wanda Uhas. This is a study that was conducted for Pitt County, dealing primarily with life sciences. It was a very good study. There were some good results on that study and I know that Wanda and her Board has already talked about the implementation of some of those strategies. Ms. Uhas.
Thank you. And thank you for letting us make this report. We don't always get to tell you what we're doing on a regular basis. We come only when we're asking you to let us put together an incentive package, so we appreciate this opportunity. This is quite straightforward. Every community wants to pursue biotech and life sciences companies. Our concern was whether or not our community as a whole was really positioned to be able to do that. And if we are, how would we do that? What sectors can we really compete in? We hired Biggins Lacy and Shapiro, which is a leading location selector and community analysis company out of Princeton, New Jersey. We had extensive support from the North Carolina Biotechnology Center. In fact, they paid for the bulk of this study to be done. As you can see, we wanted to really know, bottom line, what specific action steps could we take? There are too many studies that get done, sit on shelves and never really amount to anything. You'll see a lot of words on these pages. I can send you this report, both electronically or in hard copy, if you'd like more detail. We'd be glad to sit down with you later as well. We spent seven months on this study and you can see there's a long list of collaborators. We really took the approach of wanting the people who work in specific sectors to help us in those sectors. So for instance, if we were talking about medically related issues, then we had the folks from Viden Health Systems involved in that process. First, we look at some of the things that are assets for us. There are some promising drugs that are being developed over, through the university. The university at any given time has about 50 projects in their technology transfer pipeline. There are some amazing things going on. Mark Manny doing work with a platform that could possibly provide vaccinations for various types of multiple sclerosis. So some promising drug therapies. We also have a good potential medical device niche. Probably the medical device that most of you know that we have in this community is the DaVinci robot. But we are looking at other, maybe less spectacular devices. A device that, using sonography, can tell you whether or not you've got a blockage in your carotid artery, those kinds of devices. They also discovered for us some real strengths in terms of behavioral health. Those are the things that we see a lot of in eastern North Carolina, diabetes, smoking, any of those kinds of issues. So here we're talking not strictly mental health, which is where you usually think of behavioral health, but behavioral health in general, including the physical. We also saw a very strong clinical services potential. We don't usually think of the service sector as being a primary job creator in the way we think of primary jobs. But when you have, for instance, the VA clinic that is being built here, then you're talking about jobs that really do turn into primary jobs even though they're not manufacturing. Let me make very clear, we are not saying that the Development Commission will no longer pursue manufacturing jobs. We are simply saying there are other kinds of primary jobs that contribute to our tax base. We also, and this fits with some of the previous information, some real opportunities in research cores, nanotechnology, ag bio. You know, we tend to hear ag bio, we think agriculture and not the bio part. Ag bio is a rapidly growing field and we see some tremendous opportunities there. We also, and this was something that we knew, but we were glad to have a third party say, you're absolutely right. In terms of our responsiveness to industry needs for training and human resources development, we are, as a community, we are very, very good at that, whether that's our community college, our university, our public schools. And that not only are each of those entities good individually, they partner very well. And another thing that I think we all feel is true, but again, it's good to have somebody else say it, that we do have a very high quality of life for families, that this is a good place to raise a family. On the other hand, all the news is not good. And if it was, then we would have wasted our money to ask for this information. Our clinical capacity, i.e. doing clinical trials, is tremendously undeveloped. We've got all of eastern North Carolina that we serve, but we are not using those assets to do any clinical trials. And that is often where substantial financial investments are made. I mentioned ag bio. We are doing, we've got a very strong agricultural base, but we really haven't been doing a lot with the bio end of agriculture. And that's one that's been just under the radar. Even though we have a lot of entrepreneurial assets, we have not been really pursuing innovation. And when we say innovation, we don't mean simply small businesses of all kinds, but in this case particularly those in the life sciences sectors. And even when we know we have these very promising research cores, we have not really pursued those. The Development Commission offers no support whatsoever to any sort of research that is going on. And again, we're not saying that that is going to become a primary part of our mission, but something for us to be aware of. Part of that then also translates into inadequate support for entrepreneurs. We have all kinds of entrepreneurs in this county. Our particular focus, because the Technology Enterprise Center, have been technology-based companies. They might be technology-based, like a Pioneer Surgical Orthobiologics, or they might be a Ken Fossein and an oxygen sensor. But companies that are going to create high-paying jobs and that will keep their roots here. Not surprisingly, in eastern North Carolina, we don't have the extensive venture capital that you might see in the Triangle or in Princeton or Boston or San Jose. We do have an eastern venture network, though, so there is some venture capital available for those companies. Our facilities, now I mentioned our incubator. Our incubator now is at 90% full, yet on Friday, we had yet another call from a company that is currently in Northern Virginia that is looking for wet lab space. We are going to have to find a way to expand what we have open in the Technology Enterprise Center. When Pioneer Surgical moves out, we'll have some space, but that may be a while. And there is no other wet lab space in Pitt County, other than that at the university and at Viden Health, if it's not in our incubator. We still have skills shortages. That skills gap that you continue to hear about is one that haunts us. We have jobs that are available, but we don't always have the people with the right skills to match those jobs. And one that we really didn't like to hear, that we are remote from the standpoint of site selection. The urban arc now extends through Raleigh, Durham, Chapel Hill, Wilson and ends in Greenville. So we are part of that urban arc, but we are the end of that urban arc. And that is something that we are going to have to address. We got recommendations out of this, and I'm not going to go over all the recommendations except to let you see what they are, but we won't go into all of this detail. The first recommendation was to develop a behavioral healthcare training and delivery leadership group, people from a lot of different disciplines. Our first thought was, that may not be something that we can on our own develop. And that was quite true, but as it turns out, Beth Veldy, who is on the chancellor's staff in terms of community relations, is already looking at something comparable. So we already have an ally in that area. Enhance the vertical, and we will pick up on where we already are in terms of implementing some of these things. To enhance the vertical entrepreneurial support ecosystem. Those are big words to say, do more for entrepreneurs. Find a way to pull together the support that they need. Exploit Dr. Nifong's model for clinical core training. This is the one that we're leaving over in the parking lot right now. That's not one that we're ready to address. That's one that Wiley Nifong really takes care of on his own. And so at this point, that's not where we're going. We've got it there to offer him support, but not there. Enhance research competitiveness. That one's really a university opportunity, though again, we're there to offer some support. Enhance ag bio marketing positioning. That's one that we're going to address right off the bat. It's one that we're well-positioned to do, and in fact, we have a meeting coming up in the next few days. And then the final one, to engage more fully in STEM activities. And I know that's one that you've heard a lot as well. Public schools are already addressing that. The university has stepped up to the plate with their engineering faculty and some others and said, we want to offer some support services there. Pitt Community College also has a STEM program and they have offered their support. So we already have a team put together to move forward with that. So to let you know what we already have in progress. I have a cold. Recommendation one, as I said, we are already in conversation to move forward with that. Recommendation two is the one I want to talk about a little bit because it gives an example of how things ought to work. We had our first meeting of the various organizations who do something in terms of entrepreneurship. Let me also say, since Commissioner Garrus mentioned budget, all of the recommendations that Biggins, Lacy, Shapiro gave us are things that we can begin to work on for the next year or two without having substantial new dollars, that with the assets we already have, we can move forward on doing these things. We had the first meeting of the folks working in entrepreneurship. That included the university, the community college, the North Carolina Biotech Center, the city of Greenville, the Chamber of Commerce, SBTDC. Nine different organizations, 17 people, and everybody who was there was about the business of how do we support entrepreneurs as opposed to how does my organization get either more credit or more dollars? as opposed to how does my organization get either more credit or more dollars? It was how do we get the job done? It made for a lively and committed kind of conversation. An expression we have been using is that, on the one hand, we don't want to operate in silos. On the other hand, that, that meeting was a good example of each of us swimming in his or her own lane, that if Marty Hackney is taking care of the entrepreneurial initiative at the university, if Jim Enzor is taking care of the Small Business Center at the community college, if our office is taking care of the Technology Enterprise Center, then we end up with a complete array of services that can really offer every entrepreneur what he or she might need. The recommendation, the fourth one about research, we have shared with Chancellor Ballard and with his vice chancellors. That is something that they are utilizing internally. That's where research goes on in this community, is at the University School of Medicine, and they are taking care of that in their area. If they need us, we are there to offer that support. In the meantime, we're not interfering there. We have an inaugural meeting scheduled with the ECU ag bio leadership. For instance, it turns out that the leading expert in cotton anywhere in the country is on the, on the biology faculty of our own university. We didn't know that. We'd never talked about that. And now we know, and there are a lot of things that we can do with that. The sixth recommendation on STEM, we already have conversations in progress, again, with public schools, with the community college, with the university. One thing that we are trying to make sure that we do is that we involve all the partners who need to help execute this. And on the other hand, we don't tell people what to do in their own areas. So we're not going to tell the community college what they need to do, or the university what it needs to do. What we are going to do is to serve in a collaborative model, so we get this, this job done. Beyond the six recommendations that Biggins, Lacy gave to us, here are some others that we are already including in our own program of work for the coming year. In the center of the report, when they talk about our lack of facilities, that has brought up the conversation concerning a shell building. Over 20 years ago, the county commissioners said to the Development Commission, "If you can get a half million dollars from the private sector, we will put up another half million to have a million-dollar shell building fund." From the private sector, we had $600,000. The commissioners did, in fact, give us the additional 500,000. So there is a million-dollar industrial building fund. Now, 20 years ago, a million dollars not only built a building, it built a really nice building. A million dollars won't do that now. So we're looking at ways to partner with other agencies or with the private sector to do that. We're also looking closely at the municipalities. A lot of them are doing work in commercial retail. That is not work that we do, but it is very much a part of the whole economic development area. So we are going to look more closely at how we are able to serve those municipalities. There is an additional report on young professionals that was done by the eastern region. The Rural Center also has a fund currently for helping retain young professionals. That's something we're going to be looking hard at. It's a different kind of workforce development that we've done with the community college, but an important one. We also are going to put more emphasis on using our existing cultural and recreational assets. That was one of the things that came through loud and clear in terms of the life sciences. And as I said before, we're going to stay out of silos, but swim in our own lane. Are there any questions? I know that's a lot of information.
I have some comments.
Yes, sir.
How much money does the county give you for the redevelopment fund? In other words, my, I've always thought, we, your job was to bring jobs to-
Right.
-Pitt County. That's the reason that we supported over the years, shell buildings and things such as that.
Right.
First, I want to know, how much did this study cost that you're talking about?
The cost-
How much of that money did you use pertaining to it?
The cost to us was $20,000. We had an additional $40,000 from the North Carolina Biotechnology Center.
Because I know in research, we're not going to do much in research. The university, the Broad School of Medicine, I know where the money is coming from, and of course you do too. You can't compete with those people. But I think our main concern, or my main concern, is bringing jobs to Pitt County, to Aiden, to one of them. And I have been on the moat there for the Baffa area, Mideast. What is being done pertaining to that land that those people has designated for an industrial site there, on Highway 11 and 13? I've been asking questions that I can't find out anything about.
Okay. Land's East Industrial Park is a little over 700 acres.
Yes.
The biggest drawback we have there, and it's a budgetary issue, is that we need utilities at that park. We estimate the cost of getting water, sewer, electric, all of those services at about $4 million conservatively. At the time that we were putting that land together, there were pretty extensive grants available from the federal government. Once we had that land put together, as you know, most of that money has gone away.
All right, what about Martin County? They were partnerships with us in the beginning.
Right.
And that's the reason I was asking, Mideast, what is Martin County and Pitt County doing? And they seemed to give me the idea that Pitt County wasn't doing anything. It was on the back burner, so to speak.
Only because we don't have utilities in that park.
Greenwood Utilities goes, goes all the way up to Houston, White Station, in that particular area along that railroad. Does it not?
GUC would deliver part of the services there. Part of the services would have to come from the Martin County side. The issue, though, is not who would deliver it, it's having the money to do it. The only way we can leverage the dollars for putting in the utilities would be if we had a large enough investment and enough jobs. We had one that came close, a Brazilian company doing a, a hot, not a, not a fiber-like Dyneema, but a comparable thing. But they had to be in a facility within 12 months. It would take us that long to get utilities there, and we'd have to have that to leverage the money.
See, the thing about it is this, those people there, they designate that 600 acres and so forth. That for industrial development. We have done nothing with it, and it's locked in, so to speak. We need more. And if we don't do something for it, then they aren't going to cooperate. And I don't blame them.
Well, we-
Not one bit. And so I, I wanted to be up there to let the people know that we are concerned with, Mr. Chairman, we are attempting to do something pertaining to the area.
We market that property, and because it's our only good rail-served property, any project that is looking for rail, that's the primary site submitted. What holds us back with any of those proposals is not having all the utilities there. And we simply don't have $4 to $8 million to spend on utilities for that park.
Yeah.
That's the only holdback.
What I've always visualized, the Development Commission is to bring jobs. Research, yeah, if you can get them, but, and it's not, the Triangle is not coming through Wilson primarily, it's primarily coming from Rocky Mount. All you have to do is to go to the developments, leaving Pitt County, going to Lewisburg, Youngsville, and back into Rocky Mount to develop. And I can give you the names of them, if from Pitt County.
Thea-
For that.
The only real high-end development left in that area is Hospira, and they did do an expansion. The Rural Center has just completed a report that shows that that urban arc, though, now pulls not through Rocky Mount, but has shifted to Wilson because of Beckton Dickinson and Purdue primarily, and they already had Merck. So Wilson County has more pharmaceutical manufacturers, we have more pharmaceutical employees. So that's shifted a little bit. It's a, it's a strange and interesting kind of change.
I have one other question, Mr. Chairman. I know we need to push jobs here, and-
We are very much aware of that.
Well, I mean, here's a much- I did this report, that's what I'm concerned with.
Good. Okay, thank you, Mr. Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wanda, even with the, with in the land set aside, even if we had utilities, doesn't the state's resistance to build controlled access interstate-quality highways in the east affect that development, as well as we're not connected by a controlled access highway to the GTP or to any port, whether it's in Virginia or down at Moorhead? And it's really hard, especially on the manufacturing side-
Yes.
-because they, they know that we can build their product, and we have the people, but we can't ship their product, especially if they have to bring in things from GTP and if they're not on rail, because then they have to go through all the stoplights in Kinston, come all the way up. And just, you know, in the evenings sometimes, when I'm going from Greenville to Aiden for a meeting or something, it takes no less than a half hour to 45 minutes to negotiate about 15 miles-
We're a big county.
-especially on Highway 11. So I think our infrastructure needs, I know we mentioned infrastructure needs that we can control. I think the one variable that we can't control is the state and their willingness to do things on this side of the arc versus wrapping another highway around Raleigh or Charlotte.
Absolutely. And the two things that you just mentioned, controlled access and rail, we often get requests for proposals that will say right up front, must be a rail-served site, which means that if we don't have it, then we're no longer competing. And if you're talking about moving a great deal of product, then, then that's a necessity. And also, we do get the requests that say, must be within 10 miles of an interstate highway. The argument we try and make is that 264 is a four-lane freeway-type highway. Sometimes that will keep us in the competition, sometimes we're simply eliminated because it's not an interstate.
The problem is, it stops at the border. And we need something that connects us to GTP so they can get their supplies in, to build the products that they need, so that we can get to a port to ship things.
Yes. And at one point, we had to lobby with the State Department of Commerce, because if you look, the map of North Carolina that they were using, because they were showing only interstates, didn't show any roads at all in eastern North Carolina. It looked as if you got to Raleigh and then everything stopped. Now, we have been able to get an exchange there, so that our four-lane highways are shown.
I remember you worked with that, and-
Yeah.
And you know, and I say that to highlight that we need to lean on our legislators and our representatives in Raleigh, one, to make sure that they don't shift road construction to the counties, and that we maintain the current formula that's in there, just so that we get any money. But also that they need to substantially invest in eastern North Carolina, because our metropolitan areas are doing better than we are. If you look at all the maps, me and Melvin received, I think Scott has a copy of this, the, the map book that the NCACC put out, your core counties in the Piedmont, over to Charlotte, are doing very well. Meanwhile, the east and the mountains are not. And we're an exception in many ways, but we have some unique things that other counties don't. But we really, I think, need to step up the pressure on our representatives that go up there every day, to get some things in the east, because the east won't grow without the basic infrastructure of highways. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's what I'm concerned with. If you go to Baffa, they got a railroad there, they got four-lane highways coming from Greenville all the way from Raleigh to the coast, within a mile of this area we're talking about. And nothing is being done to develop that at all. You know what I'm talking about, Baffa Tri-County is. The railroad track goes right under that. You got a four-wheel, I'll be in four roads this side and on the other side of it too.
Mr. James, I think one of the issues, Wanda alluded to 264, and you're alluding to Highway 64. 64 is more of an interstate-quality road that I think Wanda and her folks try to sell. We try to sell that with the Land's East property, but one of the things noted by the consultant, the Biggins, Lacy, Shapiro, is the remoteness factor of the Greenville urban area. When you look at the Baffa area, that's even a little farther removed, remote-
Yeah.
-in terms of, and that's part of the perceptions, I think, of trying to, trying to promote that park, even though it does have internet, I mean, interstate-quality road access to it, it's still, there's a remoteness issue, and then there's the infrastructure issue of the water, the sewer, the roads internal to the park.
If we had utilities in that park, it would make all the difference in the world. If we had even the $4 million, which would be the smallest piece we would need to really launch utility construction.
I go that road quite a bit. And they've got a big, they, they're building some plants along there, on the other side of Robinsonville. More remote than anything that Pitt County around Baffa. And I was one, I said, "How can they get it, and we there in Baffa and that area can get nothing?" If you don't believe me, all you got to do is ride on the road, you'll see what I'm talking about. But anyway, and I said, "Somebody up here is doing some work."
Again, if we had $4 million to launch utility construction-
I don't know whether they got $4 million or not, but I know what they do.
That's, that is all we need to make that park happen, is a utility service.
Commissioner Wood.
Two things. One, I just want to emphasize that the utilities for that park, you know, would have to be almost a joint effort, I would think, with Martin County and with Pitt County. And I think we need to keep that in our minds. You've said it enough. That, that is the one thing that we might be able to sell, even though it is considered a remote urban area, which even the extended part of Pitt County is. Two things. One, the, I would like to suggest, and I hope the commissioners will agree, that you offer this presentation in this format, like you've done today, not too long, but enough for them to hear, to our municipalities.
Sure.
You know, and I think it would be a very good thing for them to feel included, because they are. We have representatives on our Development Commission Board from our smaller municipalities. So they have a say-so, they get to listen, they get to contribute. But I think it would be good for the different councils, city councils and town councils and town commissioner groups to hear this presentation. So I'd like to recommend that you do that on our behalf.
We will certainly make that offer, and we are willing to do this kind of thing for civic groups or anybody who has the interest.
I just think it's important that our municipalities, even though they are a part of the board by appointment and that sort of thing, I would like for them to feel that we're reaching out to them and inviting their comments back in. And that may make a difference when you go out to some of these outlying areas. They may have some thoughts and some ideas that they can contribute to us. So I think maybe if we just request to go on their, one of their meeting nights, that would be great.
We want to be very clear, too, this isn't just a Greenville-centered report. So for instance, if we're talking about ag bio, Pioneer, the corn seed experimental fields that are actually in Lenore County, they also have a cotton division. The fact that we have that expert means that we may look in the Aiden and Grifton area for opportunities for both research and agriculture in that sector.
And I just want them to feel like we are being proactive in including them, which we already are doing, but I think we should offer this to them. The other thing is, I believe that the Development Commission Board, and you may want to speak to this, Mr. Garrus, is already looking at this and making plans-
Yes.
-of setting some goals based on this, and you've already made some decisions about that, and I think that would be a good thing to share.
Let me, in, in case you haven't seen our legislation, the legislation that created with the Development Commission was from 1957, and it created us as the Industrial Development Commission. We are not looking at going to Raleigh to change our legislation or anything like that. However, what industry and business looked like in 1957 is very different than the way it looks today. So while we will still continue to focus on manufacturing, as I said before, that will also be in the context of whatever is a primary job, i.e., it's not that I am simply selling you house cleaning services, but that I am providing respiratory therapy. But something that, you know, again, functions as a primary job. And those are the kinds of things that we are looking at that will make a difference in, in our program.
So we're using this information to plan and to establish a short and long-range plan for us to expand and get out there a little bit more, which is what I think I'm hearing from the rest of the commissioners. Thank you.
Can we add one question? Okay, Commissioner McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wanda, what I'm hearing, the concept of collaboration and swim in your own lane and stay in your own lane concept, well, I think that's noble, a noble idea. You know, however, you know, I, I would recommend the city of Greenville, university and all the colleges, and I think that's, that's noble, but, you know, I can remember some years ago, when we had a conflict, when certain municipalities was trying to, you know, do their own thing. I'm, I'm concerned that someone has to take the lead and, and, and focus on that. Well, you know, I think the idea of, of, of working together is, is, is unique, but someone has to take the lead, I would think. How are we addressing that?
I think that because we are the Pitt County Development Commission, we do not work for a single municipality or a single agency. Our job is to serve the entire county, that that is the approach that we have been taking. Especially, I would say, over the last several months, because as you said, we did have a situation- a situation a couple of years back that I think was difficult for all of us. So we are trying to make sure, for instance, with this entrepreneurship group, we pull those people together, we organize the meeting, we're doing all the follow-up work, but we're making sure that we do provide that leadership, not only because it's our appointed job to do, but that there does have to be some organization that says, and here's our next step, here's what we've got to do to get things done. I think we've probably got better relationships with the municipalities than we have had in many years. Well, really, in all the municipalities, in all the towns. And we do have now a quarterly town managers' meeting, we get all those folks together. This most recent one was in terms, not just of what we expect to do in terms of our ideas for economic development, but what are the areas in which they are most needy? What can we do to assist them, if anything? So yes, we're taking that role seriously.
Thank you. Commissioner Coulson.
Wanda, would you consider the industrial park outside of Bethel to be an economic venture?
It's certainly a venture, yes.
Would you consider it to be an economic venture?
Yes.
Okay. Why is it then not attractive? I assume that Greenville Utilities Corporation would be the most likely Pitt County source for electricity and water and so on? Is that correct?
In some areas. The way, especially in terms of electricity, the way the system works for who serves what areas, in fact, I believe in this case, it would not be GUC that served in terms of electricity, though they would in terms of sewer and probably water as well, but that electricity would actually come from the other direction, not from GUC.
Okay, when you say the other direction, what do you mean by the other direction?
It's Virginia Electric Cooperative, and I can't remember their exact name.
So are we saying that after, and this went on before I, you know, left the board the last time, in four years plus, we've not made it attractive enough for them to be able to want to, I'm going to say, invest the money? The business I run, every time we go to local government or the state or the federal government and we need help, there's no help. So why is it that we have to put $4 million? Why are these organizations not willing to put the money up because it's a good venture, a good risk?
Unless they are going to see an immediate return on their investment, i.e., if we had a $200 million project with 500 jobs and that they knew they were going to have capacity, that's the only way we can leverage it.
Wonderful answer, but that leads me to my next question, because I figured you were going to say something like that. Then do we get reimbursed when, once this happens? If Pitt County, let's say, puts up $4 million and this venture is a success, do we get repaid?
The way the agreement is set up with Martin County as far as tax revenues, and if we were going to just write a check for $4 million, I don't know of any way we could be repaid, although we could probably negotiate a memorandum of understanding of some sort to do that. But our relationship with Martin County at this point, everything has to be 50/50. So for instance, if, and in our case, since we can do electronic marketing materials, that cost is small, so we don't expect Martin County to send us $1,000 for marketing materials. Martin County, because it's a Tier 1 county, is able to leverage some grant dollars that Pitt County, as a Tier 2, cannot. In terms of getting back tax base, the memorandum of understanding that our two county attorneys put together is that we each, say, the company is, well, actually, it doesn't matter on which side of the county line the company is located, we would still, both counties would share in that tax revenue. Martin County would charge its own tax rate, we would charge our own tax rate. Each county, the actual revenues would be based on the improvement of the property. It would not be a matter of if I'm already paying Martin County taxes, now I'm going to pay half of that to both counties.
I'm afraid you're making a wonderful case for this thing being a complete boondoggle.
It is difficult. I mean, it is...
Wanda, one thing you may want to point out, the county has partnered with GUC in the past in terms of areas to be developed. The area near Lowe's, the first Lowe's in town, I forget what the actual development area is, but we did partner with GUC where we put in money, they put in money, and we recouped our money, and actually, we're to the point now where we're making money off of it in terms of acreage and tap-on fees to the area, but that was over a 20-year period. But again, I think there was high potential for that area to develop, and GUC was willing to partner with us to develop it. Like you said, I think you'd need a client saying they're coming, and then they would still look for the county department on that infrastructure.
But what it sounds like to me is that everybody is out there and saying, oh, this is a great effort, but you go first. No, you go first. No, you go first.
In our case, it's a matter of simply not having the money. And we're not going to come to you guys and say, we need $5 million, we need $6 million to put utilities in Landseas.
Which gets back to it's not being a good venture, and maybe it should never have even been started to begin with.
When it was embarked on, the expectation, because there were federal dollars...
I understand that, so why didn't we take...
We had to put the land together first, you've got multiple landowners, so we had to have options on the property.
And that was reasonably settled while I was still here over four years ago.
And by the, and that's about the time when federal funding disappeared, that there's no EDA, no USDA. The only grant money we have had for that part was a $300,000 grant, and that only makes the very smallest star.
All right, thank you.
But that'd be one word, and I'm going to be quiet. Really, I think Bethel is just a complete different than anywhere else in Pitt County due power company. All the rest of it is in Cole-Martin. All right, now, Greenville Utilities, at one time, when Tom was talking about, were talking about going up close to Wallace Station, putting in a pumping station.
Right.
And I know that, but nothing has never been done about it. In other words, they were going to go there, put in a pumping station, have a railroad track there, had everything. The people there wouldn't go along with planning. Well, it goes back, but I know this, we have not, we ought to be putting more energy in something like that that will bring jobs to Pitt County and especially to that rural, that north of the Tar River there. But anyway, and another thing, Mr. Manager, you know, boroughs welcome. We put approximately 25 years ago, the pumping station, they had a cost of how many million? That was tied in, and we got all the money back by tax revenue that we had gotten in there. Of course, you know that, Mr. Manager, what I'm talking about. But there's lots involved that we, I think that we have set back, and maybe we have not really utilized what we have here. All right, I'll be quiet. Mr. Johnson, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Commissioner Owens.
I think Tom hit on the topic right at the end there. As I recall, when this project was undertaken, you got the land together, the railroad was a big selling point, that it was an avenue of conveyance, but you've got to get the product first to convey it. But I think you said right up front, Wanda, the fact that the federal funds diminished one way totally, and once you get those grants, that was to be a component of that, dried up completely, you didn't leave much to work with. But something can still be done, and what Gene and Tom are saying, that doesn't mean that we have given up or that we will give up, but the totality of your presentation today, to me, I think will act as a catalyst to move this forward.
Okay, Commissioner Johnson.
Yes, I'd just like to say that national and international financial picture is quite different now than what it was, and we have to live with, to a certain extent, with the financial patterns that exist today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Wanda. I would also like to just add that I serve on the Development Commission Board. We on that board are very much aware that we want to create jobs, we are supportive of Landseas. Yes, we have had some issues over the last four years, but the whole country has had issues. And we are very much aware that we do need to get an infrastructure in there, but that is going to take money, and hopefully, one of these days, some of the grants will turn around and we can do that. I still think that it is a viable project, it has future potential for the generation of jobs, and we are advertising that park throughout the state, throughout the country. And again, we are aware that we want to get something there that will generate jobs and improve the economics of Pitt County. Any further questions or discussion? Thank you, Ms. Uhost. Do I have a motion that we accept this report?
I say move.
Second. Any further discussion? Okay, do I have a motion that we approve the item for consent? We've already taken action to remove item six.
Mr. Chairman, there is one change on one item, and that's item number two, the appointment of map review officers. Before you, you have the addition of one additional name, Richard A. Ilkins, who's the new GIS Land Records Manager within the Tax Department. Kathy Booker asked him to be added to the list of names.
Very good. Any further discussion? Let's continue voting. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the items for decision. We have our 2013 board meeting calendar and our calendar for our budget this coming year. I'm sure you've had time to look at that. Any questions or comments about that?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second. Any further discussion? Okay, the next item on our agenda is to affirm our rules of procedure. This is something we do each year, and in my discussion with the manager, I don't believe anything changed on this, so if you have any questions or comments, we'll surely entertain them. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion, second.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Thank you. The next item is on page 52 in our agenda. This is really a good news item, because as you each recall, several years ago, we started recycling our shingles, an excellent program. We would actually give the shingles away just to get them out of our way. It was, in and of itself, was a cost savings for us, but now we have some contractors who are bidding on purchasing these shingles, which is a great idea. And Mr. Demery, would you present that to us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Back in November of 15th, we received bids for proposals to sell our shingles, our post-consumer shingles. We sent out to about 10 different asphalt companies locally bids, and two companies did bid on the, on this. One was ST Wooton, and the other one was Barn Hill Contracting. Just to give you a little information, over the past five months, we average about 780 tons of shingles we collect presently. During that time, we probably save about, if you average that out yearly, about $266,000 in tipping fees. We had two contractors, both contractors submitted bids. We broke it down into two ways. If the company were to come and we load the shingles on their vehicles and they haul them off, or if we hauled the shingles to them. Barn Hill was high, and that's the one we want, $25.03 per ton for them to bring their vehicles to us and we load them, and $30.03 if we take them to them, to a place here in Pitt County. We have the truck time to do it. My recommendation to you folks is that we, in the contract, put both figures in there so during a hurricane or if we need for Barn Hill to come and help us move the shingles, we'll have a way to, we'll have to come back for you and negotiate a price. The yearly impact this will have on us, on the budget, is about $500,000. $266,000 in savings and roughly $234,000, $235,000 of revenue that we will receive. So my recommendation is to allow the county manager to move forward with the contract to award the shingles to Barn Hill Contracting.
Any questions?
I move that we approve this.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
How many tons did you say?
On average, about 780 tons of shingles.
How do you get $200,000 out of 780 tons?
I multiplied, well, I just took the $25.03.
Okay, and that's, I can see $20,000, but I don't see $200,000.
Okay, I multiplied that 780 tons a month.
Oh, a month?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
If I said year, I apologize.
Any additional questions?
And this includes the 25 if we need it and the 30 if we do it. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to highly recommend that you go to the building association and those, notify those people what you are doing. A lot of people don't realize that you can do this, and I think it would help out the people in my area, because they're still taking shingles off. Do you have to remove the nails?
No, sir, don't have to remove the nails, but we do ask that they come in clean, and we've pretty much get them, we've got the contractors to do. We, what we do is if they bring a little bit of trash, I don't charge them for the trash if they bring me the shingles for free.
Right, but I'd advertise, let these, all these people, you've got to, you know who they are, and send them a letter.
We've talked to them.
Oh, that's good. Let them know, because they are, so they won't be dumping them in woods, and you know what I'm talking about.
Right.
I have them to dump on me, but...
Just to give you a little bit of information, during the storm or that year, we pulled out 16,000 tons of shingles, and we probably kept 95%, 98% of them out of the landfill.
Right, that's very important.
Any further questions or comments? I believe we already have a motion and a second, so let's vote.
Dr. Johnson.
Next item on our agenda is a resolution opposing the insurance increase. You've read your agenda. Mr. Elliott, do you have any additional comments?
Move approve it.
I second it.
Okay, any discussion?
Won't do any good, Ben.
Very good.
Well, they're going to pry, a lot of people are going to drop the insurance mark, what's going to happen? You can't afford it.
Okay, thank you. Next item is the appointment and reappointments to our Pitt County Board of Adjustments. We have several appointments and reappointments here, so let's kind of take them in sequential order. Do I have a motion that we reappoint Steve Lu?
I say move.
Okay, any, I got a motion and a second, any discussion? Let's vote on that. The next one, according to our agenda, we need to move Mrs. Holder up to replace William Moore. Do I have a motion on that?
I say move.
Okay.
And we need to finish your last vote first, if Mr. James will come in.
Eugene James? Okay, now we are voting on Ms. Holder. Okay, we have four other appointments. We need one new alternate, and then we need to replace Ms. Parker, Mr. Congleton, and Mr. Hudson. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, to replace Ms. Parker, I nominate Jonathan Keith, he goes by Taylor Keith. Spoke to him over the weekend, he's still interested and served.
Very good. We can continue the nomination process, or we can go on and vote, since some have already started. Let's vote on Mr. Keith. Mr. Chairman, Mr. James? Okay, we need the alternate and two additional persons to serve. Have any nominations?
Mr. Chair, if we're in doubt about people to appoint for this, let's think for, this is a very important responsibility, and you need people that have the time and the ability and the standing to serve on this particular position.
I agree. And I agree with that.
I don't know from the list that we've got anyone that, and if there's any member of the board that has, we'll go with it, but if not, we might need to ponder that a little bit, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I have one, but that's all. Okay, I have one, but that's all out of the ones, and I would go along with what you're saying that we, and that is Porta Stokes, who has come off of a board that he has served very diligently on, and he's always very interested in going back and working for the county, so I would like to recommend him for one of the positions. I'm not sure which one.
Is he south of the river, north of the river?
He's District 5.
South.
South.
Okay, let's vote on Porta Stokes.
This be south of the river?
This will be south of the river, because. Excuse me?
Replacing Bobby Hudson.
Yes.
Yes.
Now, so we have one more regular member and the alternate. Do I have any nominations?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner James and myself serve north of the river. I think that Commissioner Owens brought up a point, a valid point, that we might want to think and consider someone north of the river.
I don't have anybody, but I'll find one.
To, to.
So I have a motion, we tabled the, action on the other two?
Yes.
Okay, let's vote on that.
I second it.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Now we have.
Mr. James and Mr. Hammond, you need to vote.
Mr. Chairman, for the next one, that on the nursing home adopt care, I move that we follow the recommendation of Ms. Eubank.
Okay, let's, let's proceed with the nomination or the recommendation that Mr. James has just made, which is item seven. Are we all together? We're removing that as a, as a recommendation. So any, any discussion on that? Do I need a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes, okay. Any further discussion? Let's vote on that. Okay, now let's move back.
Mr. Chairman, I want to encourage, if there's any volunteers out there for these nursing homes, she does need them, and it's a very important committee.
Okay, thank you.
You people, senior citizens, volunteer and help us out.
Okay, Mr. Hammond, will you vote, please?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Okay, now let's move back to item number six, where we need to reappoint some members of the Development Commission. According to our extract here, we have three that we need to reappoint. There are another three that need to be replaced, but we're going to postpone that until our next meeting. So do I have a motion that we reappoint Jerry Cox, Tyree Walker, and Pamela Hill?
I say move.
Motion second, any discussion? Okay, let's vote on that.
Do we need to vote on recommending that we wait on the next? Okay.
Okay, the next item on page 77, we are going to appoint and reappoint some people to the Pitt Greenville Convention Visitors Authority. We have one appointment at the recommendation of the City of Greenville, Mrs. Henderson. We have a reappointment at the recommendation of the City of Greenville for Mr. Shek.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Thank you very much. That concludes our items for decision. We have one last item on our agenda, and that is Commissioner comments. We will start with you, Commissioner Hammond. Do you have any, any comments?
I have no comments.
Okay. Mr. Coulson?
None.
None, thank you.
Good meeting.
Very good. Johnson, Commissioner McGlaughlin? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll do it, you're second.
Okay, let's vote. Very good, thank you.